We're good. All right, welcome everyone to the August 12th Newton Planning Board meeting. First, we will rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just so you know, Dennis can't see anything but he can hear everything.
Yeah, that's the message I got, so I guess that's the way it should be working. Okay, so it sounds like we have enough people and don't need to seat anyone because Dennis is on right now, and we might have to...should we seat Keith?
You can seat Keith, actually.
Okay, in that case, we will seat Keith in place of Rena. We are going to just alter the order of the agenda a little bit here, just so that things flow a little bit better and not to make people sit here much longer than they need to. So, the first one, though, is still at the top of the agenda, so this is the request for an extension. So, Michael Montello, Tax Map 9, Block 1, Lot 6, for a 10-lot subdivision for their property, 104 North Main Street, Newton, New Hampshire.
So, they had indicated that they would not be present tonight, but the firm representing them has...it's Catherine Morrell, did some middle letter requesting the extension. The reason for the extension is that they are still seeking their DES alteration of terrain, they're just waiting for some numbers back, so they are seeking a six-month extension, which is fairly typical when there are simply state permits that are still being waited on. We also have another extension request, so this would be a similar reason for potentially considering that extension request. I would suggest doing the extension request with the conditions going forth, but just extending it until February 25th, 2026, which would be the one-year anniversary of the original.
So, that would be their six months and then the additional six-month extension?
Correct. Their six...their current...their first six months expires on August 25th, which is why they submitted the extension request for this meeting, so that's what their requesting is for until that August...I'm sorry, February 25th, 2026.
Okay, and at such a time, they're going to need to notice the abutters again.
Uh, no.
This has been continued since January 14th.
No, this got a conditional approval on February 25th, this 10-lot subdivision, so they did get a conditional approval, they're just asking for an extension so that they can meet some of their conditions, most notably the AOT permit. So, abutters aren't typically noticed for just an extension request. If they don't meet that...those conditions in that timeframe and don't ask for another extension, the plan never gets final approval, so therefore it goes away effectively.
And then they gotta come back to us again.
Correct, and that would...and they would have to reapply, go through the whole subdivision, noticing the abutters, all of that, again.
So, I'll make that motion stated with those...what was the dates, Jen?
I would say extended to February 25th, 2026.
With those dates.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Dennis is on there.
So, you guys do a roll call vote.
Who does the roll?
I will do it. We're gonna just go starting down the line with Bob.
Sounds good.
I'm an I.
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 Dennis?
Did you hear me?
He might be on his other Zoom.
Sorry, Dennis, we didn't hear you if you said anything there.
Dennis, can you give us a thumbs up?
There he is.
We got it, that's unanimous.
There you go.
Yep, we saw you now.
Okay, it sounds like...
So, I can help to work with Robin to draft up a letter that would be for that extension, that would get put on the website and also put in the files, and we can send it to the applicant.
Okay.
Perfect.
Next up, we're just gonna skip down those a little bit here, so we have Lemon Kestrel LLC of Newton, New Hampshire, requests a public hearing for a lot line adjustment between lots 12-2, 4-9, and lots 12-1, 4-10, located at their properties on White Cedar Way. How you doing?
Dennis Quintal here, representing Ryan Norman for his project off of... construction started on this lot, which is 4-10, I know it as lot 5 on the subdivision plan, and the abutting lot, which I identify as lot 4, and I think that what happened there was there was a foundation that was poured, and there was a little discrepancy on the on the architectural plans, so when the building got built, the porch on the westly side wound up being like about six inches over the setback line, so the setback is 10 feet, it wound up being nine and a half. So, instead of...since the framing was all done on the house, it was decided that the best thing to do was just to do a minor lot line adjustment, and so that's what we show here, is a little pie-shaped piece here. If you drew a straight line from this blue line, right straight up through and match this blue line up here that you have on the plans, you'll see that it just nips the corner on that...on the property line, we have a setback...I mean, the setback line, if you go to the setback line, it just nips the corner. So, we're providing a 12...an over 12-feet separation where all we need is 10 feet of setback to the property line, so we're doing this pie-shaped piece here and pie-shaped piece there, so it's a difference of 90...95 square feet of changing from one lot to the other. So, the areas of both lots don't change, it's just one lot is subtracting off 95 square feet, and the other lot is gaining the 95 square feet, so it winds up being equal on both sides. So, it accomplishes the goal of meeting the setback requirement for that building, and that's not too much more I need to say about that.
No, it just keeps everything in compliance, and it doesn't change the other...the other structures area to all their beholding, so everything's copasthetic with that adjustment.
That's why I wanted to show the other building on the other lot, because there's quite a bit of setback on that, that's the garage side of the house.
So, because this is a minor lot line adjustment, doesn't create any new lots, a public hearing actually doesn't have to be held, but for the subdivision requirements, one of the requirements is that they post money for the NEPA account, and they did...Mr. Quintal did ask for a waiver from that requirement, which is meant for review for, you know, my time or Mike Vignali's time, given the subtlety of the request, I don't think that that is necessary, so I think the waiver is reasonable, the application otherwise is complete, but you will have to take a vote on the waiver request, and I have some conditions to recommend, but...
So, I'll make a motion to grant the waiver for the NEPA account, to waive it.
I'll second it.
Second.
There you go.
So, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Dennis, thumbs up, that's unanimous.
Yeah.
So, my recommended conditions are that the bounds be removed or replaced as needed to meet the new plan, you can see on the plan set that there's some new bounds, given the funny jog, it's good to have those, recordable MyLARs just because of the new lot line adjustments, and copies of the new deeds. So, that would be my recommendation for any conditions.
Sounds pretty standard.
So, I'll make a recommendation to grant the lot line adjustment with those conditions due to the fact that it will put that house in incorrect ordinance with everything, and that they were due diligent in coming forward now and asking for all this to be done, rather than trying to just sweep it under the rug. So, I think it was...it was good of them to be honest about it, so...
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Dennis?
There we go, unanimous, you're all set, Dennis.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Dennis, I'll work with Robin to get you the notice of decision.
Yeah, I'll bet you send it to your email.
Okay.
So, next up, so there's kind of two items on the agenda.
See you later, Dennis.
We'll start with...oh, yeah, don't forget that. So, we'll start with the first one on the agenda, so it's the request for an extension, 125 Development, NH Corp., Tax Map, 14 Block 1, Lot 27-3, for a site plan.
Good evening, Board. This is Phase 5, the residential part that we're looking at getting the extension. Last week, we just received our public water system approval from NHDS, and this makes the project viable for us, so we can move forward. So, we would like an extension for about...for a year if we could, because it's gonna take us a while to build it, or we get six and we come back, that would be the Board's...whatever the Board would like to do.
So, six months would be February 25th, there's just...there's a date discrepancy in your letter of the extension, the original notice of decision was the 27th, the approval was the 25th, just for clarity, so it's really...it could be six months, that would be February 25th, 2026, you could do a full year if you...so, stop, so that would be August 25th, 2026.
So, what did you say the date would be for six months, February 25th?
February 25th, 2026.
And then if we went the whole year, that would be another six months, would be...
It would be August 25th, 2026 to do.
I guess by making it sooner, does it allow for more kind of...
So, I mean, if they can...you're allowed to do up to a year per your own regulations, or you can have a little bit longer discrepancy, if you only do six months, that means they have six months to fill the conditions and then need to come back for another extension request, or the application is not complete, they don't get final approval, they start all over again. You know, it's not atypical to do a full year, you can just do six months if you want to, if you want to have a check-in, and then you could consider in six months that additional extension.
So, my question is, if we did it for a full year and they want to accelerate it in any way, is that also a possibility?
Sure, I mean, they could get it done in nine months instead of a full year, it just...
I mean, I don't...I don't see why we can't grant the request for a year, if that's what they...
I would say if you think that, you know, they're still moving forward, it's really state permits at this point that you're waiting on.
Well, DOT is the final, that's all we left, but there was no point to press forward till we had a public water system, right? That's a major, major, major hurdle.
What's really holding them up is the state permits, if you may consider that in February of 2026, because it will be the same board members, if you just give another six-month extension at that time, or you think you're likely to, maybe just do the year. If you want to check in in February or January probably, that's also an option.
We'll be back for more extensions, it'll take us more than a year to build 44 units. I believe we'll get our DOT fairly easily, but...
Just to be clear, if you get to final approval of the...that site plan, which is the 44 units and the road, that's kind of the easiest way to think about it.
Then that's it.
You don't have to build the 44 units at the, you know, before you get...it's getting the final approval of the plan, and then you have the two to five years of not being exempt from all of the regulations to build it. You could honestly just build 20 of the units and never build all 44, and still be in compliance with it if you got to that point.
But if we gave them a year extension and they're ready before that, they could request to come before us.
They actually wouldn't need to come before you, they would just need to fulfill the conditions of the approval from last February.
Right, it's already approved, okay.
You might not even see them, quite frankly.
Oh, you'll see us.
That we're talking about.
It sounds like he's...
We got a ways to go yet.
Sounds good.
I'll make the motion to grant the extension till August 25th of 2026.
I'll second it. All in favor?
With the condition that if in that meantime, during that course of the year, when you get those permits from DOT and/or whatever the state, that we receive a copy of them.
So, that is a requirement of the original conditional approval anyway.
Right, I just want to reiterate that in this.
The application actually can't even be recorded until those numbers are noted on the plan set, so you guys can't even sign the MyLARs to get them recorded.
At that point.
Still with second. Second, all in favor?
I, and Dennis is an I. Do it with those thumbs up.
Yeah, thank you, Board.
All right, so that's that one.
Don't go anywhere.
No, I'm not going anywhere.
125 Development, NH Corp. of Placid, New Hampshire, requests a public hearing for a amended site plan at 3, 5, 7, and 9 Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. Property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lots 27-4. This application is a continuation from the June 10th, 2025 Planning Board meeting.
Okay, so again, we've been working diligently with our town engineer and with a Rockin' Ham Planner, Jen, and our new engineer that's doing the work for us, that's working up all the plans, all finding all deficiencies, making everything corrected. They've come up with an agenda plan right now, schedule, how we're moving forward. 8:14, the final serving for the bounds, which they need for the MyLARs, will be completed. 8:21 will be the upset of set of plans, drainage analysis, and preliminary waiver request memo to be submitted to Jen Rowden and Mike Vignali. 8:25, meeting scheduled between Ms. Rowden, Mr. Vignali, Andrew Peroni of Horizon Engineering to go over the existing condition, plan, and waiver request memo. Thursday, 8:28, submitted to the items to the Town Planning Board in hopes of being on the Planning Board meeting on September 9th, and then Tuesday, 9:9, would be the hearing that we're asking the CBA. So, that would complete everything we need to do by then, I believe.
So, I...all of the Planning Board members should have gotten a copy of this, but I had sent an email to...
Andrew.
The applicant, Town Engineer, CC'd, Rob and Eddie, or Andrew, but the gist of my email was that yes, they did submit some of the information that had been requested back in June, but they did not submit what is effectively the requirements needed for an amended site plan, which is a site plan. You know, a lot of the information you do already have, because this site has been certainly surveyed and you have a lot of information, but the amended site plan needs to show what is on the site, and there are some discrepancies between what was originally approved and what is on the site. But that means that what they also needed to submit needs to include things like the property boundary, the setbacks, the wetlands, the...all of the drainage features, the building, the parking, a number of things that I know you have bits and pieces of, but it needs to be in a cohesive plan set, I've talked with their engineer, so I've had this conversation with him, we have another one followed up for the 25th, it's, yep, that Monday, with Mike Vignali and I. They also submitted some drainage information, again, moving in the right direction, but was lacking information that really is going to be needed to ensure that the site is safe, isn't impacting the neighbors, is in compliance with your regulations. This does have a little bit of a, I'll say, a funkiness in the fact that the original site was approved in 2013. Your drainage requirements in 2013 are different than they are today, but ensuring that that site is at least meeting the requirements of back in 2013, they've done some analysis to begin to indicate that there is not an issue, but they need to make some modifications to that drainage analysis as well. Again, moving in the right direction has not quite fulfilled what I think you guys need to even take up this application as complete. So, what has been requested is an extension of this application to the dates that Tom indicated, and I did talk with Andrew, your engineer, about, you know, the dates, I think it is a very aggressive schedule, I will be fairly impressed, honestly, with Horizon Engineering if they're able to pull that off, but, so it's really...it's up to the Board. I, you know, if you were asking for several months out, it might make sense to either they could withdraw the application and then come back when they're ready, you guys could deny the application for it's just incomplete, you're not saying whether it's good or it's bad, you're just saying it's incomplete, and you can use some of the things I've listed, or you can grant the continuance. You know, working with applicants under a reasonable timeframe is generally the advice that I would give. I do want to bring up, we did request that abutters get re-notified for tonight's hearing for July 22nd, I did not see any documentation that that occurred.
It was provided to the town, Jen.
And that may have been, I just personally have not seen that.
Next time, I'll make sure you get it too.
So, those are sort of your choices and where the situation has landed us.
Yeah, I know Jen did reach out to me and ask, and I told her that they didn't have to be certified this time, but they did have to be mailed out so that the abutters would have them.
We have no problem doing that again for the 9th, if you would...
So, when was the date that he was looking for?
So, we're looking to come back on 9...9/9, Tuesday night.
September 9th?
Yeah, that's what Andrew's telling me it'd be done. I've looked at some of the paperwork, he's gone quite a bit further than what he shared with Jen, and so it's mostly about completing the MyLARs right now, which is a boundary survey, because they can't use someone else's survey, they have to actually do it.
How about if we do it at the end of the month, we do it the 23rd, we'll give them an extra two weeks just to make sure.
I got no problem with that.
That way, there in case there's any hiccups, it gives them a little leeway time and he's not quite as pressed.
If we do the 23rd, we'll re-notice again the same ways we just did for tonight's meeting, so the abutters are aware.
Exactly, and then we can get the abutter notices out so that they'll be notified.
If that's what you can...are considering, I would recommend that the abutters be noticed by at least September 13th.
September 13th?
Which would be a full 10 days before the continuance, if that's the route you choose to go.
Not a problem. Is that the minimum, or some of the 20?
So, if this was a brand-new application, it would have to be 10 days with...
Technically.
With certified mail and all of that. Technically, this application has been noticed via certified mail, and all of the continuances at the meetings serve as the notice to the public. When you start stringing it out, and this has been going at this point for a number of months...
Do we have a count on...I was trying to find it earlier today, do we have a count on the number of continuances for this? Because this isn't just...
So, the continuance tonight was from June 10th.
Yeah.
I believe three is the correct number, and the original date of the application was January. So, it has been a while, you know, sometimes stuff does take a while, it's really up to the Board on whether you feel that progress is being made at a sufficient pace and is realistic, if it, you know, if within the next six weeks, something can come in that's really close, you know, you've...
Well, I guess my concern is, it's been eight months, and now you're saying it's everything's going to be all set in the next meeting.
Well, he's also dealing with a new company that's not familiar with it, that's been going over everything and what's required and stuff, so...
I understand.
That's correct, we had to switch engineers because the other company's too busy with all our stuff, so this one, we're...this one took some...this is taking a lot of doing, because asphalt's are tough and, you know, vegetation's grown huge, and from when we built it, and so, you know, it's taken them a time to get everything, but I'm pretty sure that things are looking good for the previous date, but I'll guarantee you, it'll be good for the following date, the 23rd, I feel that we can wrap this up and move on.
Quick question, did you get...receive your notification for the meeting for today? Okay, so, they did go out. I thought of that when I saw you sitting there, that we would be able to verify, so that's good. So, I am going to make a motion that we grant the waiver, but it's going to be granted for the date of September 23rd.
So, just to be clear, the continuance.
Continue to September 23rd of 2025.
So, the...
And then that way, they...everything should be good.
I just want to be clear, though, that both, I mean, I'm going to meet with Andrew on the 25th, Mike and I both still need adequate time to be able to review it, so as soon as things are available, please forward them, but at minimum, two weeks before that meeting.
And that's why I...that's why I did the extra time, so that when he does have it, you would be able to get it and be able to review it with Mike.
Is there a cutoff date that we should provide, that if we do not have materials by then?
I think you certainly can, but I also think that you get to the meeting on September 23rd, and information was either not provided, I'll say, in a timely manner, or is provided at the last minute, you have another decision to make.
Fair enough.
Basically the same ones today. I think, I mean, there's obviously progress being made.
You tell him to stick to his plan, that way they can get the information to Jen and Mike, we can have the information for the Board, and then they have plenty of time to review, and that will make...definitely make the meeting go real smooth. So, we need a vote...
Quick question, like, the 9th is that previous meeting, the Tuesday, if you...if you see that it's not going to happen on the 23rd, I'm just trying to think to not keep having these people show up.
So, if you vote to continue it tonight to the 23rd, you still, unless they withdraw and we just announce a withdrawal notice, you have to take up the application. That is the notice, that's why the courtesy, I'll say courtesy, but that's why the extra notice going out is probably pretty important. I do have one other thing I just want to say before you guys vote, if that's okay. One of the other things that I had talked with Andrew and was also in my email is the recommendation that any waivers that you need to seek, provide written justification that addresses the waiver requirements that are in the site plan, so there's about three points that you should really be addressing and be specific. That will help the process also go a lot smoother. No guarantees that the waivers will be granted, but the process will be smoother for everyone.
I agree.
Okay, so that was with the conditions, that the abutters get re-notified.
Yes.
What Jen just suggested.
Yes, September 13th.
Yep, that'll...those will go out, and we'll meet on the 23rd.
Yeah.
So, there was a second, you guys need a vote.
All in favor?
I. And an I from Dennis.
Thumbs up, yeah, big thumb. Thank you, Board, highly appreciated, thank you.
So, this one... All right, couple more things on the agenda, in terms of Board business, so we have the acceptance of the meeting minutes for the June 22nd, 2025 meeting.
That was a tough one.
Yeah, we have a motion for...
A motion to approve the minutes from July 22nd, 2025.
June 22nd.
Oh, is it June?
No, wait. July. July. I'll second it. Like Ron Burgundy just wrote up a script.
It's great.
All in favor?
I, and that's an I with Dennis.
And I'm back on.
It's got to be a record.
All right, I have a couple of things to talk to you guys about that are...
Coming down the pipeline. Coming down the pipeline. Okay.
So there was a lot of activity in Concord this past year as it relates to planning and zoning and largely, things for you guys, housing-related, because housing is sort of the big topic. But I just wanted to cover a couple of zoning ordinances we're going to need to make some amendments to. And I meant to have drafts for this evening and I just didn't have a chance to get to it. So September 9th, we're going to talk about zoning changes that we effectively have to make. So some of those are building permits being issued on private roads. I think you guys just have a citation in there that I need to verify, doesn't go into any more detail. But basically, if you have your lots on a private road and getting a building permit, that process just has become easier under the state law. I'll talk to you about that, too, Sam. The vesting period for approved projects. So when a project reaches final approval, it used to be you would get two years to reach what is called substantial completion. That basically means the infrastructure is there and the site is stable. Then you have five years to complete the project without being subject to changes in zoning regulations. There are some exceptions for health and safety-related things. Those two timeframes got extended to three years and seven years. That is noted in your site plan regulations and your subdivision. Those are minor tweaks. We'll take care of those this fall, because that's outside of town meeting timeframes. There are a couple of things with multifamily dwellings now being allowed in commercial zones. So in your commercial zones, we now have to call out that multifamily is allowed. It's just adding an end of the permitted uses, and it's not industrial zones, it's commercial zones that allow for things like retail and office space. Your commercial district is exactly that. So we just need to add a note to that zoning proposal. That doesn't go into effect until next year, until July 1, 2026. So this March town meeting, we want that proposal to be...
The key word to that was multifamily, not a single family, but a multifamily.
Yeah, it just means you have to allow it. It doesn't mean it will be built. It just means you have to allow it. Has a much bigger impact on other communities, but we have to make that small tweak. The next one is onsite parking requirements. You guys actually don't have a lot of parking requirements in your regulations, but we can't allow... We have to make sure that there's no place in any of the regulations where you require more than one, because that is now the state standard. You can't require more than one parking space. Someone may choose to build more than one. So a lot of multifamily developments tend to, when they build it, the need they kind of come up with with commercial average is 1.3 parking spaces per dwelling. So that includes, you know, some households only have one, some have two visitors. You still have to have ADA compliance with your parking as well.
So we cannot require more than one?
Correct. Someone can choose to build more than one. So the biggest change, and this is for basically every town in New Hampshire, is to the accessory dwelling regulations that went into effect on July 1st. So right now, and I was talking with Sam about this before the meeting a little bit, if Newton gets an application for an accessory dwelling, basically asks Robin and Sam to just let me know so I can help folks work through the state regulations that are applicable already in effect, even though your zoning ordinance might say something else. Which your zoning ordinance does say something else because it requires a conditional use permit. We won't be doing that anymore, because that's not allowed under the changes to the state law. And as you think of accessory dwellings, we used to talk about attached versus detached. There is no more difference. An accessory dwelling is just an accessory dwelling. It can be in the main house. It can also be in the barn that's existed in the back. Adequate septic still has to be provided, adequate water. You can still allow up to two bedrooms. The size requirement has shifted a little bit. Now, the minimum maximum ceiling is 950, but there's some caveats for what is living space versus just the size of the accessory dwelling. So think of like porches in some rooms and garages. There's a few other subtleties in there, but effectively, every single-family home in a district that allows single-family homes by right has to be allowed to build an accessory dwelling unit in any structure that legally existed before July 1 of this year, as long as they can provide adequate water and septic.
So that's if the building is already onsite, right?
Correct.
And my other question was, the electric and the septic had to be tied into the main, right? The main building.
Yes, now you can have separate.
Now you can do separate?
And it's very specifically called out in the new law, electric. And you can have a detached accessory dwelling or that dwelling... It has to be in a structure that already exists, but you can now build a new home and the accessory dwelling at the same time.
Gotcha.
And as long as the accessory dwelling is following... The town can apply regulations to the accessory dwelling as long as it's applying the same regulations to the main house. So like setbacks, lot coverage, architecture in some places, if you have like a historic district. Some of those are less applicable to you guys. The design, your current regulations require, you know, a door that be connected. You can't require that anymore. Think of it, if you could put an addition onto your home, you know, more bathrooms, you need a bigger septic system, more bedrooms. Well, the same principle applies to the accessory dwelling. The one difference is that DES does treat the septic requirements for an accessory dwelling a little bit higher than just more bedrooms and bathrooms.
So if somebody wants an accessory dwelling unit, they don't need to come to the Board anymore?
Nope.
They go to the building inspector?
Correct. You know, places where Newton does have choices, you can, in some places or some circumstances, allow more than one accessory dwelling, if you wanted to. A second accessory dwelling could trigger a conditional use permit. You could structure it that way. You can allow a bigger accessory dwelling, if you want to. It just can't go below the 950 square feet. You can allow detached and new structures. There's a few other places where you definitely have some choice, but the choices that the town can impose are more restricted at this point.
We currently only allow one.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And we can still continue to do it?
Yes, you can still continue to allow just one, you know.
I missed it by four years.
Actually, can you go up to the mic just for the recording?
Sam's going to educate me right now.
Sam's any of the building inspector. I was going to say that if, for some reason, you decided to allow two accessory dwelling units and they were all attached to the same structure, then it would be considered multifamily and a whole set of new building codes and fire suppression and all this other stuff.
Yeah, it does trigger a lot of things. In many subdivisions that have homeowners associations or condo associations, you can't do one anyway because of the covenants on those, especially like a single-family home subdivision. If they have a covenants that says no accessory dwellings, well, everybody has to say yes. Sam may say yes, you guys may say yes, but if the homeowners association and their documents say no, you don't get it.
Question. Accessory dwelling unit, is that still, does that include a tiny home?
A tiny home certainly could qualify as an accessory dwelling. Tiny homes are typically as 400 square feet or less. There are some caveats to that, but effectively, yeah. So look for that zoning proposal change that you will be forced to do, whether you like it or not, at the next meeting. Can you go up to the mic, sorry?
You had said 950 square feet. What about those, like, ready-made homes? What about like a trailer? Does that all count, or...
So a trailer, like a manufactured home, could not just be plucked on. A modular, like, think of like a shed that you could brought to your site. Under certain circumstances, yes, that could be an accessory dwelling.
Okay, so there's no square footage requirement?
The square footage requirement, so the state requirements that towns have to abide by is that they can't require less than 600... I'm sorry, less than 750 square feet of what is called living space. So think of like fully finished interior, heat, cool. And the unit itself, the towns don't have to allow it to be bigger than 950 square feet, but that could include things like garage or porches or unfinished storage space. So pre-built, you know, manufactured modular, those can be accessory dwellings under what is the state law at this point.
Okay, and that was like the tiny home question?
Yeah.
Those like preconstructed?
Yep. The preconstructed doesn't negate it's allowed to be used, but a mobile home, like a trailer, that would not be allowed to be an accessory dwelling. And manufactured homes, like mobile homes, also can't have accessory dwellings put onto them.
Okay, pretty much just if it has...
And multifamily. It's for single-family homes. That's the intent, is that the accessory dwelling is just that, it is accessory. It is not the main structure, it is not the principal use. It is, it's smaller than the main use, is the intent.
Yeah, just curious. The 950 square feet could include decks? Porches, rather, I'm sorry?
Porches, no, but, I'm sorry, porches, yes. Decks, no. Garages, yes.
Porches, like a screened-in porch type of thing?
Correct. Because that's part of the structure.
Right.
And I guess the key clarification that you made is there are most to be treated just like single-family homes in a lot of respects.
As far as setbacks, look, feel, lot coverage, honestly, while you can get into the living space versus the total square footage, it is significantly easier for you guys, for Sam, to just have the unit be its 950 square feet. Don't get into the how you're connecting it. Don't, honestly, don't get into the little games, would be my advice. And that's sort of what I'll draft, and we can change it however you want, but keep it really straightforward for homeowners, for your building inspector, and for code enforcement, just because it makes everybody's life a lot easier. The intent is to enable housing opportunity and some flexibility within, I'll say, some reasonable constraints, whether you think those are reasonable or not, I'll let you debate, but that is the intent.
But we could also still require adequate parking for the accessory dwelling?
You can only require one.
1.3?
Nope, just one. Just one.
They just rounded down, apparently.
But I will say, parking has, with any application,